Hey, how are you?
Excellent. I've been seeing you since... Hi. Hi. But I'm an assistant coach. But you know what? I have... I said this? Yeah. So, the head coach.
My hair is getting brighter.
I remember.
I remember.
Do you know this?
Yeah. My hair, my hair. She's here. Yes. Yes. Yes, that's true.
Come on, I'm Patty.
I'm about to switch you. Hey, you're up, huh? I switched your chairs.
What we sitting there?
You right there.
Oh.
Oh, the air. Oh. You know. I got your chair.
Yes.
Oh. But then...
I can just shirt tie it. I love it this morning. Shirt tie it. So, I've learned.
But, uh...
Wait, how you did? I... Last... Yes. That could see clearly.
I know, that's exactly.
They were...
Just like that.
Well, getting on...
We are always in trouble.
Right here. Some things I say are horrible. Yes. Sleep. I'm not going back in. So, where is your dog?
I'm going to Sarah. Like Sarah is talking.
I'm sure.
I'm just...
I'm so proud. I'm so proud of you. And then wanting to be in your child. Oh, it's so... Oh, yeah. I did not know that. I did not know that.
Yeah.
Well, that's no way I'm better. I was smart.
Oh, yeah. Well, it's the big ones. Oh, no. Oh, no. That's...
Why all this stuff? I'm just wondering.
It was so bizarre. I had to say, and the people from... I said, listen, permission. Over here. I said, you all should be on the side doing... They need to... Is that the greatest movie?
You see me, please. The movie. On the big screen.
That's true. But I'd say kids come in.
You don't want to... Let's just tell them. Sarah, hello. Oh, my God. Well, our... Uh, that is... We said, we know. Just one turn. That will rely on... Secondary.
Yeah, yeah. No matter if you change that. Know that we... You got half of us. But that's thinking about... I think...
Up. This is my... This is why. Well, I did this. I just... Oh, actually, my science... You said, they have... No. You have a... Tell me that is... Call to the support by science. Okay.
Thank you all for your patience. The board members will be arriving shortly.
I haven't had the chance to get some.
Here, put it on the floor. See, I told you it was soft.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, good evening. Welcome to the regular meeting, regular business meeting of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors for November, or November? You're killing me, June. For December eighth, two thousand twenty-one, we'll call this meeting to order. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka.
Present.
Ms. Buckner.
Here.
Ms. Cortez.
Here.
Here.
Dr. Jones.
Present.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Here.
Mr. Hogan.
Here. Thank you, June. All right. Is there a motion to amend the agenda as presented to remove? Oh, hang on. We got some... Are we good?
Oh, sorry.
All right. Yep, that's better. Thank you. All right. Is there a motion to amend the agenda as presented to remove presentation four? It's four dot ten for repurposing. We have, um, one of our district employees is out ill.
Second.
All right. So, move to second, June. Please call the roll.
Mr. Abarka.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, June, will you please do a quick review of old action items?
All of the action items were responded to and have been in the weekly update or presented at the Blueprint 2030 meeting last week.
Awesome. Easiest agenda item ever. And by the way, thank you guys for being patient with us. Apologies for the late start. Our executive session ran over a little bit, so appreciate you guys being patient with us. Dr. Bedell, turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, under the superintendent's report, we have a couple of items we will cover tonight. A number of recognitions. We'll start off with resolution first, and then we'll move to our scholar superstars, our terrific teammates, outstanding administrators, community champions, and then we'll also have a quick school safety update as a part of my announcement, and then we will move into our workshop presentation. At this time, we will move forward with the conducting of a resolution for one of our former employees of the school district, former board member Carl Evans, and for this particular recognition, I will pass it over to Vice Chair Wolfsey.
Thank you, Dr. Bedell. I just want to welcome Carl Evans' family and friends that are with us in the audience. We're thrilled to be able to offer up this resolution as the Kansas City Board of Directors. I was lucky enough to serve with Carl Evans for, I believe it was three years. I kept he and Matt Oats in line up here on the dais. But, um, he was one of those, I think it was best said by Mr. Carl Boyd, um, he was a leader from behind. I think a lot of people don't really understand how influential, um, and I think maybe we do now, um, with everyone that is here, that he really did leave from behind. He left a legacy, um, I'm sure in his family, but also with his friends and his community of people that will continue his work. So, um, with that, I would like to read the Kansas City Public Schools Resolution. Whereas Carl Evans was a tireless advocate for students who was first elected to the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors in two thousand eleven, and whereas Carl Evans was a nineteen sixty-five Lincoln High School graduate and U.S. Army veteran who earned a Bachelor of Arts in History, a Master in Administration, and a Specialist Degree in Administration from the University of Missouri-Kansas City. And whereas Carl Evans began teaching in the Kansas City Missouri School District in nineteen seventy-three, serving as a teacher, student adjustment center coordinator, counselor, vice principal, program administrator, and principal before his retirement in two thousand and two. And whereas Carl Evans served multiple terms on the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors, retiring from board service in two thousand nineteen. And whereas Carl Evans continued to serve the district's teachers as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Public School Retirement System of the School District of Kansas City, Missouri, for six years. And whereas Carl Evans continued to be a proud alumnus and champion for the Kansas City Public Schools and its educators and students until his death on Saturday, November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at the age of seventy-six. Now, therefore be it resolved. The Kansas City Public Schools Board of Directors expresses its appreciation for a lifetime of dedicated service by Carl Evans as a graduate, teacher, administrator, and director, and extends condolences to the Evans family.
So, um, I'm not sure where our board secretary went. But she has the physical resolution, so... You know, you want to invite Chris Evans and others to the podium that would like to come up and say a few words?
Good evening, everyone, and, uh, thank you all for coming out in recognition of my father. My brother and I and all of the family greatly appreciate it. That was a beautiful resolution. In it, it said that he graduated from Lincoln in nineteen sixty-five, but what it didn't say was that my dad was actually twenty years old when he graduated from high school. And when he was eighteen as a sophomore, uh, he told me that he was embarrassed when the U.S. Army came in and said that he needed to register because all of his classmates said that nobody in his class is eighteen years old. So, that's just a fun fact, but it's amazing that, you know, before there was a thing as bullying and teasing kids, that my dad would go on and, and live on past that, being teased for being so old and take education so seriously. So, I thank you guys for, um, having him on the board. And as you go through, and there's tons of metrics and, uh, all types of ways to measure kids and whether or not the board is successful, um, just remember, my dad always wanted to keep the kids first, so somewhere in the classroom, there may be an eighteen-year-old that's a freshman or a sophomore that could be the next Carl Evans, so I greatly, greatly appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. So, Chris, I was trying to keep you up here for a minute, Chris, but that's, that's okay. Hey, I just wanted to, so, um, I want to say a couple of things. One, you know, in a role like, like this one, um, people can, if they're not careful, um, make some judgment calls on, on why, you know, our vice chair versus the chair actually read the resolution. Jen had a very personal relationship with your dad, right? And she had worked with him from this dais and had spent several years with him. So, I don't want people to read something weird into the fact that I didn't introduce the resolution. It had nothing to do with that. I didn't know your dad, but I feel like in some ways I, I did. So, since his passing, and even before, I'd heard a lot about him and his commitment to the city and particularly to our kids. And what I think is incredible is he leaves a legacy of compassion. Right? And I don't know that there's a more meaningful, particularly in today's environment, more meaningful legacy that someone can leave. Right? Is wanting to sort of have an entire city wrap themselves around, um, our kids in a way that, that is needed today more than ever. And so, um, you should be, your entire family should be, and I'm sure you are incredibly, incredibly proud of the man that he is and was, and the legacy he's left behind, and the way he poured himself into this district, uh, year after year after year in his public service record. The other thing I would say is that you know your dad is pretty important to the city when, um, the superintendent of schools directs the board chair in a meeting to make sure that he looks presentable. That literally happened yesterday. I was, I was told, don't come in here looking kind of, you know, off, and so, um, hopefully I presented myself well. So, um, we, eh, maybe just, okay, that's fair. So, uh, what we want to do now is we want to vote on this resolution, um, and then, uh, you know, present it to you and your family. So, is there a motion to approve the resolution honoring the life and the work of Carl Evans?
Summon.
There's a second.
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarka.
Yes.
Ms. Buckner.
Yes.
Ms. Cortez.
Yes.
Ms. Ford.
Yes.
Dr. Jones.
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsey.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, the motion passes. Do you want to do old board members? Any... Did you want the other old board members? You've got three or more.
All right. So, we have one last announcement as it pertains to Mr. Evans before families and guest members, uh, begin to exit. And, uh, I want to start off by thanking Darryl Davis. I charged Darryl Davis, uh, the task of, um, putting together an event to honor Mr. Evans for his service at Paseo High School for the many years he served there. Not only was he a teacher in our district, he was an assistant principal and, I believe, served even as a principal over at Paseo. So, working with the family, we plan on January fourth to honor him over at Paseo, and, uh, look forward to that event taking place. And at that point, I think the recognition that we've already received from our board of directors and then the administrative side doing our part regarding his service, uh, will be a proper way to bring closure to all of the years of dedication for Mr. Evans. So, family, I'm looking for... So family, I'm looking forward to January 4th. I think all of our former students who are here that are in college will be here to celebrate this event, and we're looking forward to having a good time. So thank you. 3:30 PM. 3:30 PM, January 4th. Thank you. All right, and at this time, we will continue to move on the agenda. We have the Scholar Superstars. And for this portion of the superintendent's report, I will bring Ms. Kelly Waitru, our Chief Communication Officer, up.
We'll give it just a second here to make sure everyone has time to visit. All right. All right, well, good evening, Board. Dr. Bedell, thank you for the chance to recognize wonderful students, teammates, and administrators this evening. And we like to start with our Scholar Superstars. As a reminder for context, we do this once a quarter to recognize students, staff members, and administrators who are doing wonderful things in our buildings and are all nominated by their peers in the school district. So we'll go to the first slide as we get to our Scholar Superstars. And I guess I have the opportunity to do that. All right. We are excited to recognize five students today, the first being Malik Bowman. Malik, are you here this evening? I see, I see representation from Mr. Lee. We will make sure Malik gets in here. Malik is first. I'm going to start reading about Malik here as he's walking in. It is a grand entrance. Okay. Malik is a 10th grader at Success Academy at Anderson, Success at Anderson, and he was nominated by Mary Johnson. Are they coming, Kathleen? Okay, they're coming. Malik is a 10th grader who has the appropriate demeanor. Hi, Malik, despite his surroundings. Come on up here, Malik. He is an excellent example to his peers and his instructors. He does not like earning any grade less than an A. He chooses to surround himself with as many positive people and as few negative people as possible. He manages his own behavior and feelings. He has placed any personal negative behaviors in the past. He is looking forward to a prosperous future. His attendance in school is exceptional. His attendance on any task is also exceptional. Malik will do great things in the future as well as in the present. Congratulations, Malik. So Malik, you get a certificate. You're going to get a photo. And then we also have a gift certificate for you to honor your success and your contribution to our school district. So, Mr. Lee, do you want to come up here too? You can present his certificate. We're going to take a photo, Malik as well. Excellent. Thank you, Malik. And over here, Ms. Pointer has a gift certificate or a gift card for you as well. Mr. Lee, thank you for being here. Is Mary Johnson here this evening? Malik, thank you for being here. Next, we have Daxton Brown. I know Daxton is here. Daxton, can you come on up, please? Here comes Daxton. All right, Daxton. This is Daxton Brown, and he's a 3rd grader at Longfellow Elementary. Daxton, come stand right up here. So I don't know if they can see you on the livestream or not. Can they see him, Mr. Daxton? Maybe not. Okay, so Daxton, you stand right there. Daxton was nominated by Kenny Park. Is Mr. Park here tonight, Daxton? Did you see Mr. Park? I don't think I saw Mr. Park. All right. Daxton is a talented and motivated student. He works so hard and has persevered through his pandemic season. Daxton is not only a great student personally, but he makes our classroom a better place. He has a quiet and consistent form of leadership. Our class has several big personalities that struggled together when our school year started. But Daxton has helped provide a sense of calm and care for others. He is quick to volunteer to help others in both academics and socially. He has helped calm peers down and never seeks to be rewarded. He is a fantastic young man who makes our classroom move in the right direction daily. Congratulations, Daxton. Yes, and any of your parents, any family members who want to come and take a picture, you're welcome to. So come on up here if you want to get the paparazzi shot. And any family can join as well. We would love to have a picture. Here comes Mom. Jessica, you're, oh, gotcha. Okay. Would you like a picture as well with your phone? All right. All right, Daxton, congratulations. And go over here, and Ms. Pointer will give you your gift card, okay? Spend it wisely on something really fun for yourself. Okay, Jason Glover, is Jason here? Jason's here. Come on up, Jason. Hi, Jason. Jason, you're nominated by Elizabeth Smith. Okay, this is what she said. Jason always has a positive attitude, and his growth mindset is infectious. Jason is in my math class, and even when he does understand a question, he works increasingly to find the answer looking through his notes and textbooks. Once he has figured it out, he is quick to jump in and explain it to his classmates and friends. It's truly like having an assistant teaching, a teaching assistant in my class. Although the circumstances of going to school during a pandemic are very tough, Jason never lets this get him down. He makes me remember why I want to be a teacher. Congratulations, Jason. Oh, there's family. Yeah, so Jason, scoot back here to Dr. Bedell and Mr. Hogan will take your picture. And family can get in here as well. Jason is a 7th grader at Paseo Academy. Thanks, Camila. Jason, congratulations. Go see Ms. Pointer for your gift card and spend it wisely. All right, Sophia, I know Sophia is here. Sophia, come on up, please. Okay, Sophia Van Trump. You're a pre-K at JA Rogers Elementary School, aren't you? And you're five years old. Sophia is a pre-K student who enjoys learning. She comes in every day ready to learn with her many questions and ideas of activities to do in class. This student has managed to learn all the alphabet letters and sounds. She can read, count to 100, add, and so much more in the last year as a pre-K student at JA Rogers. I believe she qualifies to be a superstar because she shines brightly daily academically and is a very pleasant student. Congratulations, Sophia. Ms. Ramsey, get in there. This is Ms. Ramsey who nominated Sophia. Lovely tribute, Ms. Ramsey. Oh, Ms. Blankenship-Johnson, come here to, oh, we want to take a pic. Come here, Ms. Dr. BJ. Sophia, come here. Ms. Dr. Blankenship-Johnson is here too. She wants to take a picture with you. And a lot of support tonight for you, Sophia. Come on, Team Rogers, JA Rogers. And Sophia, don't forget your gift card. Yay, Sophia. All right. All right, and we're going to end our Scholar Superstars going from pre-K all the way to a senior. All right, Ms. Madeline. Madeline Viedeguevera, 12th grader at Northeast High School. Come on up, Madeline. Okay, so Madeline was recognized by Carmen Truax and is a member of the Federal Reserve Bank Student Board. Yes, you are. I thought Madeline was one of our staff members because she looks so mature. In the ROTC, yes, we'll say that as well. Okay, so Madeline. Madeline is a great example of how a young person could have the determination to overcome all obstacles to receive a good, quality education. Madeline moved from Guatemala to the States, leaving her family far away. Got a place to live in Kansas City with the help of a social worker. She comes to the school every day and gets good grades as shown in her high GPA. She represents the school as a member of the Federal Reserve Bank Student Board. She is an excellent JROTC cadet, and she participates in the SEAL-A-BY-Literacy Program. Always respectful and willing to help other students already accepted to attend KU Rock Chalk. And she is a role model for other students. Congratulations, Madeline. And Dr. Irvin is here as well. Vice Principal is here as well. Irvin is here, come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Come on up. Oh, we have a fancy camera here. Here, let me take your phone. All right, congratulations, Madeline. Go see Ms. Pointer for your gift card. Use it on a Jayhawk sweatshirt, please. All right, that ends all of our student Scholar Superstars. Congratulations again, young people. We are so proud of you. All right, we're going to move on to terrific teammates. These are teammates within the district that we honor, again, nominated by peers. And our first one we have today is Andrew, and he's a teacher at Northeast High School. And he cannot be here this evening due to COVID protocols. So we're continuing to manage those protocols in our district, and he's one of those folks who can't be here tonight. However, I believe that Carmen is here. Again, Carmen's still here. Carmen, come on back up. Come on back up. Carmen, you're going to receive Andrew's certificate on his behalf, okay? So I want to read this about Andrew. He is a walking billboard of leadership. He is a great representative and voice for all teachers, not afraid to ask tough questions, and pulls other teachers along while he rows the boat. Many teachers might be lost without his guidance and leadership. Furthermore, he is passionate about his profession. His relationships with students are meaningful, intentional, and exacting. Andrew goes above and beyond for students, teachers, and the entire school ecosystem as a whole. Congratulations, Andrew slash Carmen. Dr. Irvin, again, thank you for being the principal of the building and being a fantastic leader for your staff and your students. Thank you for being here, Carmen. We appreciate you. All right. Our next terrific teammate is Casey Donahue. Casey, are you here? All right, Casey. Casey is the CTE Coordinator at Manual Career Tech and nominated by Andrew, who just got recognized, Andrew Crowley and Janisha Williams for his supportive student achievement. Okay, Andrew says about you, "Since becoming a CTE coordinator this year, Casey has worked hard to ensure the success of schools that she works with. Most notably, she worked hard to ensure that NEHS Northeast was able to take not one, but two school organizations to national conventions this fall. Because of her hard work, the Northeast High School FBLA team was able to travel to Milwaukee, and the DECA team was able to go to Boston. What even more impressive was that she helped to chaperone the Boston trip and guided our students to their very first ever national experience." Woohoo. Casey is not afraid to pull anyone along that might be struggling. "In just a few months, Casey's gone above and beyond her duties as a CTE coordinator to provide students at Northeast an equitable education and career and technical experience. Her commitment to the teachers at Northeast is evident through the numerous opportunities she has exposed Northeast students to, as well as providing them with the support they need to be successful inside and outside of the classroom. Congratulations." Dr. McNeil is here as an administrator to support her this evening. Casey, you rock. Thank you so much. All right, next we have Darryl Carney, Coach Carney. We, we, does he have a ballgame tonight? We had RSV that he was coming. So Coach Carney, we want to recognize Coach Carney tonight. Coach Carney is a PE teacher at Southeast High School, nominated by Kerry King for his positive attitude. Coach Carney just got recognized by the NAIA as their Coach of the Year. And so we thought it was appropriate that he got nominated and won this award. But Coach Carney is a great coach. He's a mentor. He has 33 years of service to Kansas City Public Schools, and he's a very nice guy. He just got the NAIA Award for Coaching and is a stellar recommendation for this award. Congratulations, Coach Carney. We will ensure he gets his award at school tomorrow. All right, and our last terrific teammate is Ms. Stephanie Hines, instructional coach at JA Rogers Elementary School. Come on, Stephanie. Stephanie has a fan club here this evening. Lots of folks who nominated her are here in the room. And I'm going to read a few lines of your nomination, Ms. Hines. "I know she hears this every week, but Stephanie Hines is such a rock star. She comes every day with her A-game and is ready to jump in exactly where she is needed, which is usually everywhere. She never loses her spark as an instrumental part in our students' education. She models lessons, provides high-quality professional development, and encourages her team to be the best teacher selves. She is the light at the end of the tunnel. Stephanie is always looking for ways to help everyone. Honestly, she's one of the best parts of working here. She is the angel of JA Rogers. Stephanie is the heart of this school, and she never lets anyone struggle. Don't get teary, because I do. Stephanie Hines is the ultimate terrific teammate. She works harder than anyone in our building. She rises to every occasion and constantly wondering if she's doing enough. She's always doing more than enough to support teachers. She's extremely knowledgeable. She's truly an asset to this district and has been for almost 20 years. She deserves a raise." All right, congratulations, Stephanie. Your fan club should come on up here with Dr. BJ too. Come on, folks. All right, Outstanding Administrators. Last but not least, we have two of our Outstanding Administrators. And starting with Michael Robbins, Vice Principal at Central High School. Nominated by Jacqueline Williams for his supportive student achievement. We love Mr. Robbins. "Mr. Robbins loves our students. He nurtures them, corrects them when needed, speaks into their lives, challenges them, encourages them, motivates them, and tells them they can do or be anything they want. He patiently walks them through that process. Mr. Robbins helps our students any way that he can, and he speaks life and hope into them. I have watched him work with our students for years. Even when he was a teacher at Northeast and we became an administrator, he still had time to serve. Mr. Robbins is such a humble man and always shows unconditional love. He is our Outstanding Administrator. Congratulations, Mr. Robbins." Come on, Team Robbins. Come on up here. Team Robbins. All right, our next Outstanding Administrator is Ryan Rumph, Director of the Global Academy at the International Welcome Center at Woodland. Come on up, Ryan. All right, Ryan is one of the most hardworking and selfless people I've come across in my lifetime. When he became the Director of the Global Academy, it was immediately evident that this school became part of him as well. He put in time and effort to organize family outings, to bring our EL families together, and show them how truly supported they are here in Kansas City. He makes each and every one of his staff members feel valuable and provides constant communication to ensure the team is all informed. Our PLCs are always full of new ideas and strategies we can use in the classroom. Each minute is used to develop our understanding of the ever-growing world of education. He instills the importance of professional development in us and shows us how much we can learn from one another. Ryan wears many hats, and the Director of our school is just one of the many. He's also consistently putting in time and effort away from his own family on weekends to move furniture, decorate, and make sure our school is in the best condition possible for our kids, as his wife knows. He does all of that without the need for any recognition. You would never know that on top of all of his work at the Global Academy, he's also taking classes, teaching classes, and raising a family. He's truly an inspirational administrator, and I strive to have the work ethic, leadership, and optimism that he has. Congratulations, Ryan." She's the one who misses him when he's not at work. Ryan, thank you. You've also opened a brand-new center in the midst of all of this. Thank you for your work. Thanks, Ryan. Congratulations. And then Dr. Bedell has one more recognition this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Waichu. At this time, we will conclude this. I know, exactly. We will conclude this aspect of recognition by recognizing our community champion. We have Awesome Ambitions today, and I see Ms. Newsom is here. And I know that there's a portion that has to be presented. And so, at this time, I don't know who's, who's coming up to do it. I'm sorry. Yeah, so, yeah, come on up. I just wanted to do that. Usually, I do it from up there. I don't have my, my script in front of me, but.
Well, as you guys know, we like to provide our Community Champion Award to our partners that go above and beyond. For our students, sorry. For our students. For our students, and provide extra nori, extra. All right. Thank you. Tonight's Community Champion is Awesome Ambitions. And Awesome Ambitions currently has served 75, 8 through 12 grade girls in KCPS. And so, I talked to Marquise Hall, who's our mentoring manager, just to share a few items of why they love working with Awesome Ambitions. And he said that each month, the girls are exposed to a variety of college and career readiness field experiences. And last month, they took the girls to a trip to the International Airport, where the girls had a blast. And during this time, they were able to see new construction that was taking place. And they're also able to meet with other women engineers and project manager professionals who explain their scope of work. And through all this, we know that this program has taught our young girls to learn more about their potential careers and gain necessary skills that they need to be leaders of tomorrow. So, Awesome Ambitions, thank you. And I do want to invite Cynthia, if you have any words to say, please feel free to do so.
I was, I was teasing with our Executive Director, Denise White, there in the center, that I had prepared 12 minutes of remarks. So, now they've actually given me a mic. I said, "You give a television anchor a mic, you're in trouble." But I will be brief, and I just want to say thank you. We've got such amazing support here. You know, Dr. Bedell, all the administrators, the school board, we know that you're behind us. We don't talk often, but we know that you support us and that you know about us and that you're rooting for us. And that makes us, it gives us strength to keep going. Dr. Letitia Woodley has spoken to our girls and poured into them as well. And, and, you know, what can we say about Dr. Daryl Davis? So, he, 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 I have him on speed dial. So, thank you so much. It's our joy. This year, we opened, you know, we began coming into the school during the school day to take, you know, take these girls and give them experiences outside the scope of the school building and connect them with business professionals in the world, and really inspire and ignite that spark in them to have a dream and to focus on it and hopefully overcome some of the challenges around them as they do. So, thank you. I could go on, but I really appreciate this. This is amazing. We love you. We love what we do. We do it out of a gift of, of others did it for us, and, and we just feel compelled to do it for them. None of us are paid or whatever. We do it straight from our heart. So, I, I want to thank, you know, Denise and our board member Cheryl Cooper, Dr. Cooper, and just so many people. So, thank you all for this time, and thanks for even giving me the mic. It was really a risk, but you took it.
So, I want to congratulate all of our individuals that were recognized tonight and say have a wonderful night. We have a couple of other items that I think is important for me to mention here before we close out. The first one is just around school safety. I think many people are aware of, of, of some of the recent shootings that have occurred in, in school districts, notably the one in, in Michigan, I believe, recently. And then a lot of things that are tend, that tend to flare up on social media. And we just want everybody to know, I was on a call last Thursday with a number of superintendents from large urban districts around the country, and that was a topic of discussion. There's been a lot of things happening, and I think we have to make sure that our community know that schools are safe havens. We have a number of our security members who are here, SROs that work in our school district. And the Kansas City Public School District will always operate as a safe school system for your children. Yes, there are things that occur in the community, but I think because of the relationships that we're able to build with our students and the way that we've restructured, how we would utilize our security and SROs, that has created a situation where we have stronger working relationships with kids. So, in many cases, we're tipped off before things tend to happen, and we're very fortunate about that. In addition to the extensive training that our team receives every single year. And so, I just want to come back and just reassure this community that your children coming into our schools are in a safe haven, and our schools will be treated as such. And that is our expectation as we continue to work with our communities, but also with elected officials and, and just various members of, of different organizations within this community. And I thought that was important. And then I think there was one other item, and Ms. Waichu, I am trying to find that in my notebook, but I know that Dr. Woodley has been recognized. You can come up and just, because I don't want to mess it up, but I mean, this is a, a big-time appointee for our school district that recognizes us. She's received the gubernatorial, gubernatorial appointment by Governor Mike Tyson, Parson, I'm sorry, y'all, to serve under Missouri Department of Mental Health Commission. And I think that is huge, you know, to have a representative from our team that will now help inform how we address mental health across the state of Missouri. So, I just wanted to extend my congratulations to you for that appointment. And then I think there's a, a final piece that I did want to talk about, and I know we plan to make sure that we have conversation with our board. As everybody know, there's a lot of stuff going on right now in response to the Missouri Attorney General's letter that recently went out to school districts and school board members. And there's been a lot of conversation amongst superintendents. I've been on the call with the Springfield Superintendent, probably eight or nine districts right here that, that surround our school district around our concern with the tone and the tenure of that letter. And as you know, earlier today, Kansas City Public, North Kansas City Public Schools already made their notification. We did have a conversation yesterday with Fox Channel 4 about our position on masking. And I think we've talked to our, our Chair about this situation. We've looked up the legalities of, of this statement from the Attorney General. And I think we're, we're going to pretty much stay in line with what we've been doing to ensure that we protect our students and very aligned with all of these other school districts that are going to take the same position. So, we just want to make sure that our community knows that safety above all else is our number priority in this school district. This board has been supporting us in our position on this matter from day one. And even with masking, we're still having a lot of folks that have to go out on quarantine. Even with masking, we have schools right now. We had one of our schools yesterday or today, seven teachers were out, right? Or two schools, along with the building administrator. And it's just, it's, the volatility is very difficult, and, and we know that there's another variant that is beginning to rise. We also know that it's also hard to discern the difference between this virus and then the common cold or the flu. And so, for us, we have to continue to operate with the message of our children being safe first that will be in alignment with all of the other school districts. And like I said, we've looked up the legalities on this. And I think for us, we just want to assure our community that, you know, we're not looking to recommend any immediate change with our board. I think we have to stay the course and, and continue to monitor the numbers, and that's, that's pretty much our position on this matter. Mr. Chair, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Well, then I'll kick it back over to you for the workshop presentation.
So, we are ready to get started with our workshop presentation. We have 1.3, Service Learning, Student Social Emotional Health and Well-Being. And we will ask Ms. Travana Alexander-Toney to come up, and she will take us through this update to the board and community.
Good evening, Board Chair, Dr. Bedell, and members of the board. My name's Travana Alexander. I am the Behavioral Health Manager with Kansas City Public Schools, and I'll be sharing with you today the work that our behavioral health team is doing to provide social emotional supports to our students and families. So, this is Key Performance Indicator 1.3, to increase the percentage of students who receive effective social and emotional behavior interventions and continuous access to advocates, mentors, and counselors. So, I'm going to take you guys through a brief historical context of this work and what we've been doing, which began in December of 2019, where we really started our trauma initiative by adopting the Missouri Model for Trauma-Informed Schools as our framework to guide us through this work. We, at that time, had a trauma kickoff where we was incorporating this district-wide. However, we identified a first school cohort of 13 schools that were going to be prioritized through this trauma implementation. Those schools and their administrators, their support teams went to a trauma training, a school trauma training in Atlanta, Georgia, in February of 2020. And then we came back fired up without planning to really implement our trauma-informed initiative. We partnered with our community organizations, developed a standard trauma training and implicit bias protocols, as well as some restorative justice practices, with rollout to begin that month into March 2020. Of course, at which time, we got hit with the pandemic, which really disrupted our implementation. So, we, we kind of shifted and provided social emotional supports to students and educators through virtual platforms. Wellness Wednesdays, Mindful Mondays, and just giving tips on how to maintain mental health in the midst of a pandemic where no one knew what to expect or what was going on. During that time, we also really concretely identified what our trauma training would look like, not only for our educators, but also for our students, and we really solidified that. When we got back into in-person training, just right back in July, we really did walkthroughs of what our schools were looking like. Our equity training, taking a walkthrough and saying what needs to be done with that. We got back in schools. We identified trauma teams for each school. These trauma teams would run and really implement this trauma work, because we know not one person can do this. Not one person can do it alone. These monthly trauma trainings were meant to identify where schools were according to the Missouri Model and what needs to happen to get the schools to the next rating scale, okay? We conducted initial trauma ratings. We also conducted in-of-year trauma ratings. And we also implemented for our summer school, a student social emotional learning screener to help us identify what areas students were experiencing trauma in. So, not just, oh, this student has experienced trauma, but let's dig deeper. Let's assess what life areas has this student encountered trauma, and how can we provide the best intervention? So, that was moving into summer school. Into this year, we have continued our trauma trainings. We have partnered with Alive &amp; Well to do independent walkthroughs of our first 13 school cohort to identify the progress that they've made according to the Missouri Model, so that we have an objective assessment of where we are. And also, you know, ongoing commitment to providing quality supports and services. We have a cohort of clinicians who are currently going through the Child-Parent Psychotherapy Implementation, which is a trauma evidence-based intervention for young students. So, this is a focus specifically on our pre-K and Head Start students, where we know that they have experienced trauma in early childhood, and we are engaging early so that we can kind of engage, intervene, provide treatment, and help them get on the right track to keep them in schools as they enter kindergarten and. them in schools as they enter kindergarten and upper grade levels. So taking a look at our three-year um trends, as you can see, this is actually a month-to-month trend for the past three school years from July to October. Um we wanted to give actual numbers so that you can see the work that we're doing. Um as you can see, as we expected, returning from COVID, we have seen a significant increase in the number of students that we're serving, our student service. That includes one-to-one social emotional support, group learning, um it also includes behavior plans and, you know, all sorts of student support. We have also seen um that we are serving families. You'll see that there's a decrease in the number of families served from last school year, which we also expected because we have more students in person in schools versus last year during the the midst of the pan- uh COVID pandemic, we were serving more families, food insecurities, housing instability, um medical so- sort sorts of things. Um so as you look at this, we are well on track. We are providing quality supports and services to our students and families. We are also providing a tremendous amount of support to our educators, which is not captured in this data, but um that has been a priority for us because our educators too are individuals who are experiencing trauma and effects of the pandemic and coming back into our school systems as educators. Again, this is the Missouri Model that I previously referenced. What's important about this slide is it it identifies our theory of change, right? And it kinda guides our strategic implementation, which we'll get into on the next slide. But you'll see the um theory of change includes changes in knowledge, which is our trauma trainings that we're bringing awareness, um which we hope will lead to changes in practice, which is applied practice trainings that we offer, which ultimately culture, policy, and then system changes. Aligned with the theory of change, here is our strategic model. Our year one, which initially we adopted the model in December of twenty nineteen, really kicked off right during the COVID uh pandemic in twenty twenty. So we're really right now firmly into year two, but year one is providing training, making sure our educators and students are aware of trauma, what it is, how it impacts relationships, behaviors, and ultimately learning. And then year two is saying, okay, so now you're informed of trauma, what it is. This is the beginning stages where we identify groups who will lead this work and we really start getting into what needs to happen to carry out this work. So again, squarely into year two, moving, we're seeing more progress than at some schools than other as we transition into our trauma responsiveness, which is our year three work. As we look at the essential elements of a trauma-informed school system here, the ones that are highlighted, now I wanna first start by saying, we have done work and made advances in each of these areas as a school district. But the ones that are highlighted here, circled in red, are the ones that we have prioritized and made the most progress in since kicking off this initiative. Identifying and assessing traumatic stress, not only identifying, but early intervention. So that brings up the socio-emotional learning uh assessed screener tool that we've implemented. It also includes the school relay system to early identify uh suicidal ideation. Um we have creating trauma-informed learning environments where we are creating those trauma teams at school. And it's very important for me to mention that our trauma teams are not just inclusive of student support individuals, but also of educators who are in the classroom cuz it's important for their voice to be included, and also administrators. It is the plan to include students when we get to that point so that student voice can be included in that as well. And also understanding and addressing staff self-care and secondary traumatic stress. We have put a lot of emphasis on that this year, um so in recognizing, normalizing how we respond, but also being cognitive. We know that self-regulation and self-awareness of trauma guides how we engage our students, which ultimately impacts their learning. So that's just some of the ways um that we're working. Also, did I, okay. So just to talk about a couple of our successes, um as we talk about increasing the quality, we are providing evidence-based interventions. That has been our team of us has went through eye movement, um desensitization, reprocessing, also known as EMDR, but it's also indicated in our child-parent psychotherapy, the CPP. We have implemented the socio-emotional screener for our students, which helps us identify the life areas of trauma students have experienced. And that could be physical safety, environmental safety, social well-being, or just relationships. We are using the data to drive our supports and services. When we think about the interventions that we're providing, um for instance, the data is showing us that we have had an increase in child abuse and neglect reports that are related to sexual abuse. Um so we've partnered with Moxa to come in and provide stories of children training to help our educators identify signs of sexual abuse and also to educate our students so that they can let someone know and know how and know what sexual abuse is so that we can, they can report that. We also have seen an increase in the number of students who are expressing um suicidal ideation. So we are working with our partnership through Matty Rhodes to provide those kind of group sessions so that we are addressing those needs as we see it showing up in the data. Matty Rhodes is also assisting us with providing um bilingual family support specialists. So as we identify students whose families um first language is not English, then we can engage them in a way where they receive us in their first language and they feel connected to us. It's some of the ways that we're using our um community organizations. We've increased accountability for our partner at organizations. Um so in collaboration with our partners in education coordinator, Camilla Alvarez, we have implemented um a MOU, a scope of service that requires individuals that we partner with to let us know the theory base of their interventions and what we can expect from their outcomes. As you guys may know, a number of organizations are looking to partner with Kansas City Public Schools. We wanna make sure that our students are receiving quality supports and interventions that are grounded in theory. Um socio-emotional supports for educators, we kinda mentioned that, I've talked about how we have provided um secondary traumatic stress training, self-care opportunities, and really working with, and I think I speak to this on a preview, on a future slide, working with um our wellness team about incorporating self-care opportunities within our workday um instead of just training about it and then telling them about it, but finding the time to actually engage in it is the barrier for us all. And if we can incorporate moments throughout the day, that'll really be um helpful. Um and also, we have increased the number of individuals who have completed our trauma training. It is our goal um to have one hundred percent of schools trained by June twenty twenty-two. So let's talk about that training, right? So our journey to trauma awareness. This is where we were on, I guess, on the left-hand side at the end of school year twenty-one, and we are currently in school year uh twenty-two. We have had, you can see, a slight increase. We are probably about sixty percent trained. Uh schools have one hundred percent of their staff trained, forty percent does not. Some of the things that have impacted the progress in getting schools trained is um inadequate staffing. So we have suffered with um educators and substitutes, and if we don't have individuals in schools to teach our um students, then we can't take them out of class for training, right? And so that has really impacted our ability to move forward with getting many of our schools trained. Um another thing that's um influencing these numbers is that we accounted for last year, there was about a hundred and eighty-two staff that were trained and are now no longer within public, Kansas City Public City Schools. So so you'll see that that we are training and we're making progress, but these numbers will continue to fluctuate for um factors such as those. Opportunities for improvement, so increased professional development opportunities. We just talked about, we can't take our teachers out for training if we don't have teachers to have in the schools. Also, there's not very much time for training. Um I will tell you guys, I know that this has come up in the past, but just as both an employee and a parent of children who attend um our schools, I am definitely an advocate for early release on Wednesdays. We have got to find time to provide training opportunities. We just can't get it in through the workday. It's it's just, it's just not proven feasible. Um we have also increased socio-emotional learning opportunities for students. This looks like providing socio-emotional learning competency training within advisory periods. This looks like pulling students out and having them participate in yoga and breathing exercises and mindfulness to help them with self-regulation when they are experiencing those big feelings and emotions. Um and we have uh uh also our opportunities for improvement includes uh recalibrating the collective impact data tracking model to align with current student information system. That's a lot of words to say. We have transitioned from Tyler to Infinite Campus, which is proving to be a great platform. However, from a socio-emotional perspective, we still need to build out that platform that can readily track our response to interventions and we can directly pull reports from those. Ad hoc reports would be very, very beneficial for us and the work that we do. Some of the barriers I've talked about, again, is is staff vacancies and substitute shortages um that have definitely impacted the strategic plan. While we are still ho- hopeful we will have one hundred percent of our schools trained by June of twenty twenty-two, this is a major barrier that's um that's disrupted that work. As we talk about future planning, um in those numbers and the intervention numbers that I shared previously, you saw it was pretty um evident that we are serving more students, which we expected, um coming back from the pandemic. Um what that, the data is showing us that historically, we saw an increase of student interventions in our most complex need schools. Now, after the COVID pandemic, we are seeing an increase in socio-emotional support across all of our schools. Okay, schools that typically share the clinician, uh one to two, one clinician to two schools, we are seeing a need based on the data and the number of interventions where those schools need a one-to-one clinician. So future planning includes expanding our clinical staff to better serve those students in schools, also collaborating with our Equity Office and School Leadership regarding culturally responsive professional learning opportunities that aligns really nicely with our trauma work. We are also planning for our Cohort Two kickoff where, again, every school throughout the district is doing this work, but we are going to be honing in on that Cohort Two team, which will include consulting through Alive and Well and those independent walkthroughs to assess their progress. Um the Wellness Team Collaboration for Educated Self-Care references what I previously mentioned, incorporating those, um like I I like to reference stealing moments of self-care and and embedding them throughout the day, and improved data collection processes, which refer, which refers back to being able to enter um information and interventions directly into Infinite Campus and run ad hoc reports that shows us what we're doing, how we're, the response of students, and really outlines what we're doing as a, as a department. That concludes the presentation. What questions do you have?
Thank you, Ms. Alexander-Tony, appreciate it. Questions, Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Ms. Alexander-Tony. Uh and I I just had a question, a couple of questions that I'll make brief. Um the main question is just, what parts um of the best practices that are being worked through as far as what's recommended for best practices, you know, culturally responsive and trauma responsive care in the schools? What parts are mandatory for administrators and which, to what extent are they optional for implementation?
So are you speaking to the training that we're offering or are you speaking to the indicators in the model?
I'm pre- pretty much all of those. So the training, but also the implementation of the best practices that have been identified by Alive and Well and other partners.
So the training is required by every school and everyone. We are um have uh set a hard guideline, I'll say hard, but we've talked about the barriers of having all one hundred percent schools trained by June of twenty twenty-two. The training is not optional. I think we've talked about that in previous board meetings, um that this is a training that we know is directly relevant to the um population that we serve and to get to those academic achievements, we have to first address, recognize and address the trauma. So the the trainings are not optional. As it relates to implementation, we understand that all of our schools have different culture and climate. The Missouri Model identifies twelve indicators, um and it also gives you an example of what those schools look like through each of those ratings. So from pre-trauma all the way to trauma informed. And so it gives an idea of what it look like. We give the schools where they have the uh flexibility is choosing their priority indicators for this school year. I will tell you that for the schools who have not completed the training, um indicator number one, which is directly regarding um having standardized training and ensuring that all staff and school administrators have received that training, is a priority indicator for those schools. But that's where they have the flexibility. They choose the indicators that they wanna focus on for that school year for their particular schools.
If I could just follow Dr. Bedell, I think the the part of this, like I understand there is a process, um and there's been like a four-year process outlined, um sorry, there's been a four-year process outline. I think the part that gives me the the greatest discomfort at night is just the idea that you could have a wildly different experience depending on which school you're in. So one principal, I I love my school principal, you know, her, where she is and her, her thinking on discipline and cultural, you know, responsiveness and trauma awareness and all of that is, you know, in one, you know, wonderful place. When I get, you know, talk to parents who are at different schools, they talk about like, wow, I didn't know that was possible. I didn't know that was a way that people in this district could think. And so I just, you know, I know that there's flexibility and I know there's process, but if we're talking about a four-year process, that's somebody's entire, almost their entire elementary experience, but it's their entire middle school experience. So I get it, it's a process, I know this won't happen overnight and I understand cultural change requires a multi-phasal process. But I think, you know, I, you know, in a lot of workplaces, some things are just mandatory. Like you just, this is the practice that you can't veer from. And so I understand flexibility, but I just, I I wonder how we can get to a point where the experience is more standardized across the environments.
Great question. I know that one of the things we plan on doing is using, which we haven't received it yet, the complete report from Alive and Well um as that kind of objective perspective um to the leaderships of our schools and also to those trauma teams to let them know, hey, this is where we are, this is the work. Um a- after each trauma team meeting, there is a standardized documentation form where they list what indicator they're working on and what steps that they're making. Um but what Dr. Jones, what I hear you saying is that how do we ensure every school is moving forward?
Mr. Abarkat?
Thank you for this. This is very important stuff. Um I I wanna, I wanna try and understand some of, some of this as well. Um and and my focus, I think, is on the staff side at this point because I feel like we do a great job with our students and we could always do better. Um but I worry right now about our staff a lot. Um and the reality that they're living through trauma right now to learn about trauma-informed care, and then I know that we say self-care a lot, but do we truly give them the time between the balancing of the academic rigor that we're asking of our staff and that self-care, right? If I say, take, take fifteen minutes, but then also after that in your planned period, go teach another class that's completely different, and then go back and teach your other classes, and then you're likely taking home two hours of work to work on after the, after the day, every day, that's gonna weigh on you, right? And so I wonder how we're balancing that and and being more than the words that we're saying.
Yeah, great question. And that goes back to um us prioritizing. I am actually on the Wellness Team Committee, and so that's really a priority for me, not just, you know, buzzwords, self-care, secondary trauma, you know, are you doing self-care? But it shows that we're prioritizing and it's important to us if we're implementing those um opportunities throughout the workday. So yes, very, very important. I don't um know exactly how we do that with the competing priorities is what I like to ref- reference. Um it adds where you have, they are held accountable for academic growth in the academic side, right? Which is super stressful when you already dealing with all these other things out here. So, you know, that's where social um self-awareness and self-regulation strategies come in place. And so we encourage them to utilize those, but again, finding those moments. I think the board and Dr. Bedell done an amazing uh feat in recognizing um trauma and the giving us the week off for Thanksgiving. I saw that as an opportunity, but self-care is something that you do ongoing for emotional regulation, not just one thing here and there. So we have to have, I know we're not gonna get weeks off at once a month, is that possible? So, we have to have, I know we're not going to get weeks off once a month. Is that possible? If so, I'm voting for that. But we definitely have to find ways to incorporate it throughout the day. And you're right, it can't be though you get this, but then you still have to do this, so.
One question that I just want to see if we're monitoring. Do we have any understanding in terms of the remediation plans for teachers that have either grown or shrunk because of the pandemic, right? So, if a teacher comes back and is starting to decline and gets on one of these plans that maybe hadn't been on a plan before COVID, are we doing any tracking of that data to determine if these teachers are being overburdened and not saying anything? And maybe you're falling out of the profession completely?
So, I can say from my department, I don't have any knowledge of any tracking that we're doing. What I, if I understand you correctly, teachers that were maybe performing at a certain level and post-pandemic they come back, they're not performing as well or their students, academic growth is not reflecting what it was pre-pandemic. I don't think so. I know from our department's perspective, we are not tracking that. Okay.
So, we've been focusing on trying to lighten the load for our teachers. That's been a lot of our conversation and things that we've done. So, Thanksgiving week, that was one thing. We also alleviated some of the testing because we were hearing they had a lot of pressure from that. So, their testing load is a lot lighter as well. We also instituted the Board of Education Volunteer Day. So, everybody who works here in this building goes out to the schools at least once a month, and we've already started that. In fact, we had in those two schools where we had about five or six staff members out, we sent people from the Board of Education to go out so that the teachers in the building would not have to take an extra class and sub. We're trying to keep them from having to do that. We can't alleviate all of it, but we've gotten our people here in the building to go out. And so, they've signed up for days, but when extra needs arise, we sent out a message to the staff and people just pick up that load, just like what they did for us yesterday and today. So, there are things that we are doing. And so, Dr. Bedell had a meeting with the principals too, early in the year to talk about the stress that our staff is feeling. So, principals are also not putting as much pressure on teachers. And that's one of the things that we talked about this past Monday in the PD session, that this first semester has been a lot of trying to be mindful of how our staff is feeling and be mindful of that stress. However, we did send the message that we've got to start shifting our focus now. And so, as we continue to consider how our teachers are feeling and we are going to do more to support them, we also still have to have that laser-like focus on academics. And so, we had that conversation with the principals and the teams that we brought in. And they'll be doing a turnkey PD session with their staff members when they come back in January. But for the most part, our principals have lightened the load for teachers as well. And I'm not even aware of any plans that we currently have. We would typically have some by this point in the year, but I'm not aware that we have any. So, principals are providing support for teachers. I'm sure they're giving some corrective action, but I'm not aware that teachers are on plans unless it's a really dire situation.
Ms. Cortez?
So, this may be a question for you or it may be a question for Dr. Collier or Mr. Gordon, which is how, as we have turnover, how is trauma training built into, or trauma awareness and training built into the onboarding process so that it's seamless as new staff and faculty enter the KCPS world?
Well, I will say that we have implemented the trauma training and the implicit bias training in our onboarding. So, whenever any person becomes an employee of KCPS, they have the initial training. So, they know from the start that we are a trauma-informed, we're on our way to becoming a model trauma-informed organization, and this is what that looks like. We challenge them to look, do some self-reflection of their own Aces and how that drives their behaviors and how they engage with others, build relationships, respond. We also give them, I know Dr. Davis does a really amazing training. I've sat through it several times regarding implicit bias and really changes, challenges some of our thought processes about some of the things that we're seeing in society and how we label students. So, we have that part covered. Once they onboard, they are getting the training.
Ms. Buckner?
Hi, thank you for this. I'm just, I'm curious to know like, how we know that, we've adopted this four-year plan of our trauma-informed care in our schools, but how do we know that this is effective? Like, what are the outcomes that we're really looking to see? And how, like what's the correlation here, right? I know a lot of it is implied, but I would just like for you all to stamp that, like, we spent a lot of time on this. We talk about this word trauma a lot. But I think it would be beneficial for us to just name, like, what do we want to see ultimately? And like, what has been the effects of our, of the things that we've been doing?
Sure. So, I know this work, we started it grounded in equity data reports. So, we were looking at the equity reports of all our schools. We were looking at that data to identify discrepancies within our populations or how certain populations were disproportionately impacted by discipline referrals, out-of-school suspension, in-school suspensions. So, that's definitely at the forefront of this. We expect through this trauma work that our teachers will become more informed of how trauma manifests in the classroom and that it may not be a discipline issue, it's a behavioral issue, but it's trauma. And how we respond to that makes, changes what the student, the learning. So, that's number one. Number two is, we also want to create safe environments for our students. So, we want students and families to feel connected and safe. And we get that through our engagement through our students, our surveys, having more parents present in our schools, more active in our communities and the things that we have going on. We also want to say that when we become more trauma-informed, then we know that when a student tantrums in a class or doesn't move when I ask you to move, it doesn't mean that that student is just being defiant, okay? It challenges us to say, what happens? When we do that, we build relationships. We know through relationships that we are going to see changes. You can motivate and encourage someone to do almost anything you want if you have a positive relationship with them. So, we want to see more students in our schools who feel and report that they have safe relationships with administrators who report schools feeling as a safe haven for them. And where we see it is going to be in our academic growth. So, that's, so if we want to firmly state all of the different goals, we can do that. But we know what trauma-informed environments look like. And the Missouri Model actually gives a description and the characteristics of those as well.
Yeah, thank you. I think what would be helpful for us as we like continuously monitor this policy, is like if we had some of that data, like perception data, the data that you collect from students about how they feel in their classrooms, with their teachers, their perception about the schools, and the same type of data from our teachers, like their perception data about what trauma is and how it impacts learning.
Absolutely. I agree. We actually administered a survey earlier this year as part of the assessment through Alive &amp; Well. So, when we get that report, because the data was confidential and went directly to Alive &amp; Well, so that our educators would feel safe taking the survey. So, their reflection of trauma and their attitudes related to trauma should be included in that. And as soon as we get those reported, I'm sure you guys will get a copy of it, but I agree.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing any additional questions, so thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, Dr. Bedell, turn it back over to you.
All right. And so, we made an amendment earlier, so we will have 4.11 on our repurposing and tax incentive update to the board. And for that presentation, we will bring Ms. Kathleen Pointer up to present.
Good evening, Board Chair Hogan, Dr. Bedell, members of the school board. I am Kathleen Pointer. I am the District Senior Policy Strategist, and I'm going to walk everyone through 4.11 Tax Incentives. Oh, sorry. So, just a reminder on this policy, 4.11, the superintendent shall neither cause nor allow KCPS staff, employees, independent contractors, or other KCPS representatives to promote, support, or sponsor development proposals that place KCPS as a taxing jurisdiction dependent on revenue derived from property taxes in fiscal jeopardy. So, we do not have KPIs for this item. Repurposing does not either, although I know you are not seeing that tonight. So, we pulled out some board policy guidance points here. So, the consideration for the impact of incentives on sustained economic growth for the KCPS community, project evaluation, challenger projects would not be undertaken but for the public assistance and will not exceed the length of time reasonably necessary. And as always, we are guided in this work by our equity policy. We have really made that the cornerstone of our approach to this, especially in the last couple of years. So, I put some numbers up here for some history and previous context. You can also find this image on our website, which I will reference several times. That's kcpublicschools.org/taxincentives. So, I'm going to run you through these numbers just to give you some background. So, 17, Kansas City Public Schools is ranked 17 among 5,600 school districts in the level of abated property tax revenue. This is from a study by a group called Good Jobs First. It came out several years ago. They have not released an updated top 20 list recently, but it's possible actually we would have even risen in the ranks. So, you'll see as we go through here, we have actually seen a significant jump in the amount of money that is being abated. So, we just got the new report for 2021. $37 million is how much that was abated from Kansas City Public Schools and charter schools in 2021. That's roughly the same number as last year. Last year in 2020, we saw a 60% jump from 2017 in the amount abated from KCPS and charters. So, really large jump recently, and we're seeing that continue at the $37 million amount. And then 23%. So, $37 million in abatement is equal to about 23% of the current local property tax revenues that KCPS and charter schools collect. This is significantly higher than best practice recommends, which is 10%. So, here's some more history and previous context. Here at the top, you're going to see a headline from the Kansas City Star. I say, "Let Them Leave: Kansas City Rejects Incentive Deal Labeled Systemic Racism." So, a little bit about that deal as a refresher. That was an organ, a company called BlueScope, currently located in the West Bottoms. They had been getting decades of property tax abatement, were about to roll off, and they came back and they asked for 13 more years. Dr. Bedell wrote a letter to the city council and laid out why tax incentives, why economic development is an equity issue. It sparked a conversation in City Hall and throughout the city about how we use tax incentives in Kansas City and who is bearing the brunt of that. So, BlueScope, the council denied the request and they remain in Kansas City, fully back on the tax rules. In January 2021 and then in February 2021, we saw two ordinances come through. A set-aside housing ordinance. The set-aside housing ordinance requires folks who are seeking incentives for residential to set aside 10% of units at 70% area median family income and 30%, or, and another 10% at the 30% median family income. So, and then the incentive reform ordinance that passed as well, that reduced the standard from 25 years, 10 years at 75%, 15 years at 37.5% to 15 years. 10 years at 70% and 5 years at 30%. We feel very strongly that we saw these ordinances come forward and these conversations around tax incentives happen at City Hall because of the leadership Dr. Bedell showed in making this an equity issue. I will note here that both the set-aside ordinance and the incentive reform ordinance had implementation delays, which is important here. So, because there was an implementation delay in these ordinances, developers rushed to get applications in. We are not going to go through all of these, but I just want you all to see how many applications came in so folks wouldn't have to abide by the new reform ordinance. Currently, I'm tracking about 22 residential housing projects seeking incentives. So, a little update on some current status things. Policy improvements. Another one of the things that was kicked off courtesy of Dr. Bedell was the city is now looking to redo the Advanced KC Scorecard. The Advanced KC Scorecard is a mechanism the city uses to evaluate projects when they come seeking an incentive. There is a standing committee doing this work. It has been happening since early summer, late spring. I am on it as the education representative for the entire city. And there are about 20 other community members and other stakeholders participating. And then I wanted to make you all aware of a couple of projects that we're currently tracking. One, 2,700 grand. We've updated you about this in your Friday Board Packet several times. There's also been some news coverage of that, both in the Star and other places. So, 27th and Grand, there is a life insurance company with an office at 31st and Broadway. They have decided they would like to move a couple of blocks north closer to Crown Center. They would like to build a new office building, and they would like property tax abatement to do it. They are asking for 15 years, 10 years at 70% and 5 years at 30%. This project, a couple of things that are important to note. One, if it was moving from Kansas, they would only be eligible for 10 years, not 15, because of the border war agreement. The cost drivers behind this, the things about this that make it need public assistance are the high cost of structured parking, which we will talk about a little bit later, as well as the building design. It's a high-end design that's very expensive. And so, actually, this goes to the city council tomorrow for a final vote. It's also important to note that the council is voting on this 15-year ask. The financial analysis indicates they need just 10 years of public assistance, even with the structured parking and the high-end finishes. So, KCPS believes pretty strongly that, you know, any dollar that is over-incentivized is a dollar not going into our classrooms that could be. And then also just wanted to make everyone aware, there, some of the residential projects that I'm tracking are market rate apartment projects in the River Market. There are three of them, all within blocks of each other, and they all want 25 years of property tax abatement. They all have high-end amenities and parking. So, a little bit about future planning. I've mentioned our website a few times. We are hoping on that website to build it out so we can start tracking all of these projects. Like you saw, there are a lot of them. It's hard for folks to keep track of everything that's going on, so we're hoping to make that easier by logging that on our website. We are also looking at ways that we can get community benefits agreements in all packages for folks getting potential school district dollars. We are also pushing the city to work on a shared parking plan. Like I mentioned earlier, one of the cost drivers on the 27th and Grand project is the high cost of structured parking. On most projects, the parking is one of the main cost drivers. We also know that downtown is overparked courtesy of a city auditor report. We know that we have more parking spots than we're using downtown. We are really hoping the city will undertake an effort to work on plans and agreements that use those empty parking spots so we don't have to keep building parking. Or when we do, that it's parking that can be used by multiple developments. So, the school district can stop footing the bill for a bunch of parking garages. Some of our successes, I won't go through all of them. I know it's a long night. We mentioned the incentive reform ordinance. Want to mention a couple of projects where we reduced the tax impact or the project was defeated. A couple of big ones were the CATS project. That development team originally wanted 25 years of property tax abatement. We knew from the financial analysis that it just needed 10, and we really worked hard to push that. It ended up passing at 10 years, which KCPS supported. And then Hotel Bravo, which was a proposed luxury hotel downtown near the Fine Arts Center, first came around asking for TIF in 2018. KCPS has been very vocal about opposing that project. It finally went for a defeat in October of 2021. Both the Kansas City Star- Both the Kansas City Star editorial board and their articles mentioned KCPS's stance on that project. Also, there's a narrative in town that KCPS is really anti-development. We are not. I can tell you, this year, we have not opposed any projects in the third or fifth district. And so, we think that is really important, and we're really excited to see many of those projects go forward. And then the SB Friedman Analysis Modifications, I just want to make you all aware of that since it's a little bit vague. That ten-year number I keep referencing, we keep seeing projects show they can be done in ten years. We are finding that out because we have asked SB Friedman to change how they run their report and always include the ten-year number. Oh, and then you'll see a photo of Dr. Bedell up there along with some other panelists. This is actually the most important one, I think the most important success, and I, we are continuing to raise the profile about the need for more equitable development practices. So, that's a panel Dr. Bedell was on with a bunch of national faces working on this issue. Okay, some of our barriers. Again, I won't go through all of them, but I'll pick out a couple. So, that can of soup, we say that there is an alphabet soup of incentive agencies in Kansas City. So, when people want a property tax abatement, they can go to the city council and ask for it. They can also go to the LCRA, they can go to the PIEA, they can go to the EEZ, and several others. So, there's a lack of coordination, and, you know, we have, with those River Market projects, for example, one of them is going through the Port Authority and two of them are going through the PIEA. We mentioned the parking cost, that continues to be a large barrier. The Advanced KC process, it has been long, and there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. And we were discouraged. At one point, the standing committee was presented with six statements to include about taxing jurisdictions that would give us more say over our dollars, and they voted down four of six of them. So, that was really disappointing. And then Port KC, I'll note, one of the alphabet soup of agencies. They do not have an independent financial analysis, the rest of them do. We have been asking since, I think, May of 2019 to understand how the port evaluates the financial needs for projects and have not been able to get that. On their financial analysis, we don't often know what the cost drivers are for their projects, and so that has been frustrating for us. Opportunities for improvement and action items. So, we continue to work on meaningful policy and process reform through Advanced KC, through hopefully a shared parking plan and other things. So, that work is ongoing. The website, as we mentioned, we want to continue building that out. And then advocacy. We have an advocacy e-news now that we send out. We use it for state-level issues as well as local. So, that has been great, but we want to continue to build up the list of folks who are receiving that. And we're also working on other advocacy initiatives in the Community Engagement Department that works being led by Ms. Waichel and Ms. Adams. Questions?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Pointer. Questions? Mr. Abarkah? Don't even need to know. Ask.
Ah, thank you for all your work and those that are supporting you and providing all these important numbers. I think this is a critical component as we look towards other funding streams for the school district. Just keeping the funding that we currently get would be very helpful. So, thank you for all the work that you're doing there. Can you? I think it's important what you said in terms of, "We can develop without tax incentives." We can do it, other districts do it, other districts across the river do it within the same city. What can the board do to help you in these efforts as we move through some of these more challenging projects where it's very clear and evident that they're taking more than they need?
Yeah, so, I appreciate that question, Mr. Abarkah. Thank you for asking it. You know, I think that a lot of this work is about making, is helping people understand that these are real dollars that matter to Kansas City Public Schools. And, you know, we have on our website information about how much we're losing per student, about a thousand dollars per student, significantly higher than any of the other school districts. And so, continuing to put the word out about that is really, really important. So, please continue to do that. I know many of you already do, and I would just encourage you to keep that up.
Yes, we'll see.
Thank you for the report. I think I just want to build on kind of what we've heard tonight and what Mr. Abarkah said. So, many of you know I, this is like an area that I'm very passionate about, but I think the thing that's most effective, at least that I've found, is the role we're playing, which is sunlight. These, this program, this use of our tax dollars continued to go on until we started paying attention as the Kansas City Public Schools. And the minute we started paying attention, things started to change. But the minute we don't pay attention, it can go right back to the way that it was, as evidenced by the list of twenty-plus group of people that tried to jump in line before the new rules went into place. So, I think, for me, one of the, I'd just like to say, thank you, Dr. Bedell, for allowing us to continue to put the time into making this a priority. I know the board before I got on was the one that actually wrote the board policy, which I think has been extremely helpful. There is no sunlight, really. We have a board policy, we stick to it. It makes things very, very easy for us. I think one of the areas that we could build upon in the next couple of years is getting back to that really grassroots advocacy. We, one of the reasons why I think we were able to push back on a project that kind of initiated a lot of this was because parents actually were involved in that effort to push back on the use of these tax dollars. And so, I think as we start to begin to build out that group through Ms. Waichel's, or through Ms. Waichel's group, building out parent engagement and informing and educating and then getting people to advocate, this is how we can continue to not only stop it, but start getting back our dollars that are ours in the first place, so.
Thank you, Ms. Wolsey.
Okay, well, I guess I get to end the show. Ms. Pointer, thank you for, for the information, the presentation. I, someone's mic's on, I'm getting feedback, no? Yeah.
Can I take it off?
Yes, you can.
Nice. We're going to be fancy. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Um, I, you know, sadly, I feel like this is more of the same, right? It's like the council, the mayor, they haven't figured out like the impact here, and maybe it's, there's probably a whole host of reasons for that. I, I'd reiterate something that you said, which is, you know, we're not against development, right? Like, people like to throw that out there, like this district is just out there parading and fighting every single project that comes before the council. That's just simply not true. The data, the facts don't, don't sort of, don't indicate that. But we are for responsible, equitable, right, development that's not done on the backs of our kids, right? I don't know why that's so hard for people to sort of wrap their heads around when we're talking about the future of the city, which is, you know, our kids. So, yeah, I just don't know how we get more creative. You know, I think Ms. Wolsey's point around community engagement is ultimately what she's talking about, and how do we get people to sort of rise up and say, "No, right? City Hall, you're not going to do this because it's not being done the right way." I guess the other point that I would make is, this is an opportunity. So, I look at the thirty-seven million dollars that's been abated in 2021 from both, you know, traditional public schools and charter schools. This, to me, is another opportunity for us and charters to come together to fight this. I feel like we're fighting this fight on our own, yet they also are losing out, right? And their kids are losing out. So, this is a place where we should be able to come together as two different sets of entities and say, "No, we're not going to be okay with this." So, to the extent that we can sort of engage with the charters differently and sort of help them understand the impact to them, I think is going to be helpful for the greater good, so. That'd be my only other point, and I'll jump off of my soapbox now. So, with that being said, thank you, Ms. Pointer. We'll turn it over to you. You want me to try it, Mr. Anson?
Is that better? Okay. All right. Mr. Abarkah, we'll turn it over to you for the treasurer's report.
Do you want me to use this or that? This one? Okay. Ah, money, money, money. Okay, let's talk about some good money, kind of. Well, so, looking at our first slide here, you'll note that our year-to-date net expenditures are over revenues for the operating fund in column one. And in total, the column four, you can see that we are at fifty-three million in expenditures above revenues as of November thirtieth and over sixty-one million in total. We will, we will begin to see this decrease over the next couple of months as property tax revenues begin to roll in. Remember, we receive property tax revenues in chunks, thus we spend more than we receive until it catches up throughout the budget year. The net-ending operating fund balance is less than twenty-one million, which is equal to roughly one month's expenditures. This is the reason, the very reason it is important for us to maintain an appropriate fund balance as of June thirtieth each year so that the district does not need to borrow to manage mid-years operating expenses. So, looking at our next slide, you can see here that our month-to-date and year-to-date revenues from current property taxes are equal at three-point-four million. We did receive that small amount of property taxes in November for those early payers of property tax, as the bills are sent out to property tax owners. So, looking at our next couple of slides here, you'll see some of the expenditures as we roll through. Getting us to slide six, you'll see the total revenue is at ten percent of the budget for the year, with the largest line-to-date from Proposition C, sales tax and Title I funds. Looking at our pie chart, you'll, it depicts seventy-five percent of our budgets coming from local sources and twenty-three percent coming from federal sources, as obviously the COVID dollars and several other additional federal programs are bringing in more federal dollars, fluctuating this pie a little bit than normal. But again, denoting, sorry, denoting that our local property tax there is still our largest lion's share. So, as a reminder, December thirty-first, pay your property taxes on time, please, so that we can receive the dollars as quickly as possible. Looking at our salaries and benefits, in total, remain on track for budget, while professional services trail slightly behind, and supplies is nicely on track for budget as well, at fifty-four percent. Looking at our slide thirteen here, our expenditures pie chart illustrates our reliance on, there we go, our reliance on people with sixty-three percent of our total budget tied to salary and benefits. Nearly three percent of our budget under other is for the debt that is supported entirely from our operating budget. Linda, just to throw this quickly to you, when's the last time we've had an operating levy that would bring in dollars to take, come, take care of some of that debt service?
A debt service levy?
Yeah.
Nineteen sixty-seven.
Okay, so, we're probably overdue for one of those, just to throw that out there. So, looking at our next slide, similarly to the current fund balance position, our cash position is at a low point in the year as we await those property tax incomes. So, remember, December thirty-first, please pay your property taxes on time so that we can receive our monies in, fill up this, this cash pot for us to sustain for the next process when we are hanging through some of those low months. With that, I'll take any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Abarkah? Or for Ms. Quinley? All right. Thank you, Mr. Abarkah. Appreciate it.
Apologies. So, at this point, we will, am I going to turn it over to you, Dr. Bedell?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. So, we're ready to move forward with our auditors, the acceptance of the annual audit report. At this time, we'd like to invite Ms. Christian Hughes of RSM and Brian Welch of Welch &amp; Associates to come forward to share summary data relating to the 2021 financial compliance audits. And at the conclusion of this report, we are asking the board to accept the results of the 2021 audit report.
And just real quick, Ms. Hughes and Mr. Welch, I, I own, we should have moved you forward in the agenda so that you guys didn't have to wait through this stuff. I know it's been a long day for you, and you've put in a lot of work, so I, I really--
I'm glad you took your work.
Yeah, but I get it, so.
I follow that, actually.
Well, apologies. We'll, we'll make sure we, we do that better next time. Again, my, my bad.
No worries. Thank you. All right, well, good evening, board members. Was there anything else? Good. Okay. Well, as noted, we will be going through a summary of the fiscal year twenty-one audit and the deliverables that are issued at the conclusion of the audit. So, as a quick reminder, I am with RSM, and we perform specifically the financial statement audit for the district. And then as noted, Brian will be going specifically through the work they do on the compliance audit over the grant funding the district receives, as well as the state compliance work. So, for a summary on the financial statements, and I'm sorry, is there anything? Okay, no, that's fine. I'm going to summarize it, so I just want to make sure nobody wanted to pull the reports up. I know you all have the reports, so. So, as a summary, again, the large document is obviously the annual comprehensive financial report. I know we've spent some time, thank you, going through the content of that information. So, as far as the audit summary, I would certainly like to highlight that what you would see in there is the clean opinion, formerly known as unmodified opinion, under AICPA terminology, meaning the financials are presented in accordance with GAAP as required. We've gone through some of the content that you'll find in the report. I always like to highlight the management's discussion and analysis section at the front part of the report. So, again, if you haven't had a chance to go through that detailed content, you know, that's a short or maybe ten-page narrative where management has gone through and discussed and analyzed for you the fiscal year twenty-one results as they compare to the prior year. So, it also just kind of helps highlight anything significantly different or something you would want to hone in on. The financials, as a reminder, do include separate balance sheets and income statements for each and every one of the funds that the district does budget for and track for financial reporting purposes. There's also the collective financials there at the front, which, again, combines all those efforts of the funds to show overall district-wide balance sheet and income statement results. There's a significant amount of disclosures in the footnotes. Again, those are all for required disclosure purposes. Certain key topics you see discussed there are information about cash and investments, which you just went through, debt outstanding of the district, pension plan commitments that you have for the benefits that you do offer employees. There's also a detailed presentation of the general funds budget to actual. So, you know, again, I know, I know often that the budget is obviously the key tool throughout the twelve months of the fiscal year, and the financial report does provide a comparison at year-end of how the actual compared to what those budgeted amounts were. And then at the back of the document, it's an unaudited section, but there is that statistical section where, again, we've talked about, that provides a lot of really beneficial information. A lot of it's because it's a ten-year trend history. So, it'll be about key areas in revenue and debt, but also demographic and operational statistics about the district that you can see summarized there and some pretty helpful charts at the back of the document, so. Another document you have is those auditor communications. No significant matters were in there. We, there's just certain topics that an auditor is required to communicate back to the board at the conclusion of all audits. What it'll go through is just some of the parts we cover in our audit. Again, if any things like audit adjustments, uncorrected misstatements come up, those are summarized in that. Moving into the compliance report, auditing standards require us to communicate to you in writing if we become aware of any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls over financial reporting. There were none noted during the financial statement audit. So, in that first part, which I know Brian and I are going to split it a bit, but the compliance report, again, does include both the financial statement conclusion in that area as well as the compliance audit. So, you'll see a couple of those pages talk about how, again, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies or material non-compliance noted specific to the financial statement audit, but that there is the potential that there could be those out there that didn't come up during the audit, but none, none were noted during the course of our work. So, I'm happy to go through any questions. I know it's kind of hard to, you know, to Linda and her team, the audit is obviously a really large process. It takes a lot of effort on their part to get ready for the audit, to work through the audit process with us. So, I never want to, I don't want to not give it enough credit, but it is kind of hard, obviously, to summarize all those efforts and the information in those deliverables. And I know we've gone through them a few times, but I'm happy to go through any questions specific to the financial statement side, or if you'd like, you know, go ahead and let Brian do compliance, and we'll, we'll do them both at the end.
Good evening. All right. So, our firm is Welch &amp; Associates, and we did an audit of your federal programs, and it's called the Uniform Guidance Audit. The district received approximately forty million dollars of federal money, and we audited about ten million of that, so twenty-five percent. The good news is you're considered a low-risk auditee, which is a good thing. So, that was sufficient enough. If you were a high-risk auditee, we would have had to audit more. and we audited about $10 million of that, so 25%. The good news is you're considered a low-risk auditee, which is a good thing. So, that was sufficient enough. If you were a high-risk auditee, we would have had to audit more programs. The three programs we audited were the Victim of Crimes Act, the Coronavirus Aid and Relief, okay, CARES, and the COVID-19 Education Stabilization Fund. And we also issued an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion, and there were no findings that we noted during the course of our audit. Okay? I assume you want me to keep going? Okay, so, we will now put on our state compliance hat. So, we also audit the KCPS compliance with Missouri law, and it's Chapter 67, as well as your reporting of attendance and transportation information. In this audit, we also issued an unmodified opinion. We found that the KCPS materially complied with the reporting requirements as set out in state law. However, we did note that we had four findings. One was in regular, one was in attendance, and three were in transportation. We are going to be meeting with the district over the next three to four weeks. So, basically, we should be concluding our recommendations with Linda's team, that we will then meet back with the finance committee on what some of the recommendations are to be put in place in order to hopefully eliminate those findings from, you know, your next year's audit. Are there any questions about? And I will add one thing. I do want to couch that we feel that the significant challenge on the state compliance, and it wasn't just a challenge for KCPS, it was a challenge statewide, was that, as you all know, you were virtual for the majority of the year, and the state requirements for accounting for doing transportation as well as attendance, they have specific days where that's supposed to be done. You were virtual at that time, so that created a lot of the, there weren't necessarily new requirements, but new things you had to do in order to count that information. So, I do believe, as Dr. Bedell said before, you now have been down that path and would think that you definitely can put in place processes and procedures to not have the hiccup again going forward if you have to go through that again.
Okay. For Mr. Welch or Ms. Hughes? Ms. Cortez?
I always feel like it's important for folks in governance roles to ask the auditors if they received cooperation with all of the processes and if the team with KCPS was responsive to the process. I think I know the answer, but I think it's important to ask the question in public.
Yeah, so, I'll speak for us, and I would say yes. I actually think that they probably were kind of tired of us asking questions, but they did supply answers. We just asked a lot of questions.
That's fair, that's fair. I just think, you know, I know that it takes a lot of work on both sides of the equation to go through an audit, particularly in these unusual, in an unusual year. But I do think it's important for the community here, from our auditors, that our team was responsive.
Nothing to add, I mean, I would echo what Brian said as far as...
Thank you.
Good, well, and just so the public knows, this is not the first conversation we've had with the auditors and Ms. Quinley's team. I mean, likely, we have a finance committee, Ms. Cortez is the chair of that committee. And so, we're digging in throughout the process, right? Trying to understand, you know, where we're gonna land, what does that look like? What are some of the findings, recommendations? And so, yeah, I think one of the first conversations I know I had with Ms. Quinley was around, we need a finance committee, you know, when I first got on the board, and some others the same.
Yeah, I'm not even gonna go there. Is it on? Yeah, okay. Yeah, maybe I'm gonna be an attorney soon, right? So, totally else my train of thought. But what I will say is that, you know, I think, so, kudos to Ms. Quinley and her team. I mean, it's, this is super complex. Like, finance in general can get complex, particularly with a budget this large. But education finance is way more complex than a, you know, typical budget process would look like. And to walk away with no significant or material deficiencies is impressive from my perspective. And so, thank you to you and Erin and the entire team working on this stuff, because it's good. All right, well, with that being said, I am going to ask for a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the FY '21 annual audit reports. All right, June, will you please call a roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. Dr. Bedell?
All right, so, we'll move on with our next three items. The first, the second item is our Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City. The administration requests the approval of the calendar year 2022 rates and expected expenditures for the self-insured medical and fully insured dental plans managed through Blue Cross Blue Shield. The funds to support the estimated costs of $23,400,000 are available in the operating budget.
Any questions? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the group medical and dental insurance coverages with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City?
Some of them.
Second.
June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The third item is the First Amendment of the Lafredo contract for food supplies in the amount of $300,000. The administration requests approval of this First Amendment for food supply with Lafredo, fresh fruit and vegetable products, to allow for more spending with this company based on product availability. Funds for this increase is available in the child nutrition services budget.
Any questions? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to authorize the First Amendment of the Lafredo Fresh Produce Company Inc. contract for the supply and delivery of fresh fruits and vegetable products?
Some of them.
Thank you.
June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes.
Thank you. And the final item is the HVAC maintenance and on-call repair services. The administration requests approval of five contracts for an on-call HVAC services to allow us to be more responsive to unexpected repair and maintenance needs. The contract totals will not exceed $75,000 on any one or the available budget of $375,000 in place this year.
Questions? All right, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve Contract C 22003 HVAC maintenance and on-call repair services with ACS Building Services? Amcor Fagan Lipperstanger Industries and Train? That was a lot. June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All right, June, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes, the motion passes. All right, June, will you do a quick review of, I don't think we had any action items from tonight, did we? Did we have one? Oh, Ms. Buckner?
I would just love to see that data when it becomes available.
Yep, good call.
If that is the one action I might have.
Yeah, okay, yep. Apologies, appreciate the heads up or the reminder. I do want to do one super quick thing before we adjourn, because I, we don't do this enough. I mean, we've got these incredible security personnel here, right? That are making sure that we stay safe, and you just walk into this building, I know that I walk into this building and walk out of this building feeling completely okay about everything. And not that, you know, not that we shouldn't feel that way, but it's just incredible that you guys are here, you're here consistently, and you guys are doing a great job just making sure that everything's good in this building. So, thank you for the work that you guys do every single day. All right, well, happy holidays, and we're adjourned.